Good afternoon. This is a public hearing to hear objections to the proposed role of rates and charges for Offutt Lake Management District number 24. It is Tuesday, August 22, 2023. It is 3:34 PM. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We also have the Clerk of the Board Jamie Caldwell. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear objections to the proposed role of rates and charges for Offutt Lake Management District number 24. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the livestream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Tim Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, the County Manager will help me read your name out loud. You will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. So the public hearing is now open. Tim will now present background information on the role of rates and charges for Offutt Lake Management District number 24, any written objections submitted prior to the August 17 supplemental deadline, and any additional information requested by the Board. Tim, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Division Manager with Public Works. Thurston County Lake Management District number 24 for Offutt Lake was created by ordinance on July 18, 2023. A role of rates and charges for the new district has been prepared, which lists charges for each parcel within the district boundaries. Rates used to calculate these charges were initially submitted to the Board of County Commissioners by petition from property owners and were the subject of a public hearing held November 1, 2022. Following the hearing, the rates and charges were adopted by a resolution of findings and determinations number 16263. The proposed rates were also stated on ballot materials sent to property owners, along with the proposed charges to be placed on their parcels. RCW 3661120 directs the county legislative authority to hold this public hearing to consider objections to the role of rates and charges previously mentioned. The public hearing is limited to considering written objections to charges improperly or incorrectly assigned to individual parcels. Objections to the district's establishment, purpose, or restructure may not properly be considered in this public hearing as they have already been adopted by resolution, affirmed by ballot, and codified by ordinance. Notice of the public hearing was published in the newspaper of record and mailed directly to property owners, along with their parcel numbers and charges. RCW 3661120 stipulates that all objections to the role must include clear grounds for objection and be provided to the Board prior to the hearing. Any objections not submitted in writing prior to the hearing shall be considered waived per state law. A property owner need not be present at the hearing to have their submitted objections considered by the Board. After submitted objections and statements have been considered, the Board by statute may: 1. Approve the role as presented; 2. Modify charges found to be inaccurate or improperly assigned and approve the amended role; or 3. Set the role aside and direct staff to prepare a new role. However, if the role is modified to increase charges or include an amended property, a new public hearing must be held addressing those specific parcels only. Three written comments were received regarding this topic, and a transcript of the received comments were sent to the Clerk of the Board for inclusion in today's record. Following today's hearing, staff will consider all comments received and provide a recommendation to the Board in the form of a resolution at the Board's September 26 regular meeting.
Thank you, Tim. Questions?
Yes. Tim, did I hear you right when you said that any public testimony here today cannot be considered unless it was submitted prior to that in writing?
That is per RCW. We would need written objections to the rates and charges. And again, this is this public hearing is specifically to, for property owners, to notify the Board of any mistakes to the rates and charges.
Right, but then during your explanation, I thought I heard you say that comments received today would be evaluated by staff. So are we not supposed to listen to comments that are not submitted in writing? There seems to be a little confusion here, with me, anyway.
Yeah, I think the Board's had this conversation before. By statute, it's very prescriptive and somewhat limited in what this public hearing is for. And the Board has had conversation at this hearing and the previous hearing about whether or not they would include additional comments in the public hearing. And
Additional topics.
Additional topics, yes.
But you can accept comment. You said you're going to review public comment.
I'm going to review the written comments that were received by state laws. So there were three comments that were received, provided to the Clerk of the Board. Those have already been looked at, but we will look at those again to evaluate whether they are indicating that mistakes were made. And an example of a mistake being made, you have upland owners that are charged a very different rate than lakefront owners. If by mistake one was charged inappropriately and a lakefront owner was charged as an upland or vice versa, that would constitute a mistake.
So the citizen that just found that out today, for an example, but had not made written comment, we're not supposed to accept their comment here at a public hearing?
The instructions were in the public hearing notice that the Board approved and was sent out directly to the ratepayers and was advertised in the paper of record.
Are we limited to only one public hearing on this particular rates and charges?
That would be a question for legal counsel, sir. I'm not sure I can answer that.
I guess my concern is that if there's people that misunderstood the rules, I guess because I misunderstood the rules, I'm going to lump myself in there. So I'm just curious about that issue because if we're allowed to have another public hearing, I mean, depending on what we hear today, I guess, I might have to bring that up with you again or with my seatmates.
No, he raised his hand, so I just wanted to make sure that you finished.
No, I'm good for now.
Tim, and I understand the narrow scope of this public hearing. The Board is entertaining. And the narrow scope is to hear objections of raising charges, as you stated. But that's not going to prevent any citizen present here to provide any comments related to this process. So I don't think the Board, nor us, can limit what type of comments the Board may hear today.
Yeah, agreed. I think the statute is clear on what they could take action on.
Well, the consideration, I think the action the Board has have in front of them outside of this public hearing is very narrow by statute.
Yes.
Only to hear objections on the proposed raising charges. That's what it is.
Yes.
That's the duty of the Board of County Commissioners.
There is no action.
No, no, not today, later, after the fact. But any resident here can express their opinion to the Board as they see appropriate.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Mensah?
I remember a two-hour public hearing with Patterson Lake on the roles and charges, and very, very, very little of the public comment was about the roles and charges. So we've definitely had those types of public hearings.
In any citizen, resident present here, they can provide their testimony to you as they see fit.
Yes, and I certainly didn't mean to come across that other comments wouldn't be or to be heard.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. Okay, with that, we will move on to public testimony. Jan, do you want to wait and hear others? Okay, go ahead. And if you'll introduce yourself and the address that you reside in.
My name is Jan Leonard, L U N A R D S, 4140 116th Avenue Southeast, Olympia, Washington. I've been paying... 98501. I've been paying taxes there for 48 years. I am trying to understand why I've never received any communication about any of this. I learned Saturday from a neighbor that asked me if I would be at this meeting, and I didn't know about it. And so I walked down and got this on Monday to see. And that's when I learned about the written comments that needed to be submitted by mail or email no later than August 17th. And so I was still out of the... I'm out of the loop again. And I have a couple of questions. One is, why was the decision made to open our lake/pond to a year-round lake? I think it has destroyed the environment. I think the lake... It's a pond. It's a spring-fed lake, and it hasn't had the chance to recover from all the fishing. And for most of my life there, since I was 24, it was a seasonal lake, and now it's just constant, and it's very small. And that's my statement. I think that lake's being mistreated, and that's why it has turned to this. And there's people that are for and against. And I felt like, once I stated that I was against it, that I totally was shut down from receiving any communication from someone... From Mr. Whitley or Whitley or whatever his name was. And so I'm just trying to get my part in here because I've paid my taxes all these years, and I love this lake. And we also own property, HOA property on the lake, and I clean it up every year and take care of it. And it's just really sad to see this happening. So thank you for listening to me. And I hope next time that maybe I could get some better communication so that I could... Don't have to get my ballot on the day of. And it's just not very reasonable.
Madam Chair, could I ask and clarify a question?
Go ahead, sir.
You said opened up the lake. Are you referring to fishing season that's been extended?
Yes. For most of my life there, it was only seasonal. You didn't fish all year.
I guess I just might mention that's the Washington Fish and Wildlife. That's not the County Commission.
I don't know. I just said, I don't know who made that choice, but I think it was a bad choice for that small lake.
Government's been telling to do that.
All the milk oil and things like that. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathleen, Jim, still no? Okay. Sherry, still no? Okay. John Baer?
I'm John Baer, B A E R. I live at 4540 Offutt Lake Road in Tonino, 98589. And I'm in objections to the proposed role of rates. And most everything I had noted. Apparently, what Tim has mentioned, I can't say. So it should have been written down and sent to him as a... So what I can or would like to say is, the wife and I, we moved here on the south side of the lake where it was a little more reasonable for, you know, house hunting and property values. And we've been paying taxes, and it's getting a little tough because they keep raising our property taxes, and then you want to add another tax. You know, I'm an uplander, and $70 doesn't seem like much, but my property tax went up about 300 to 400 more. So you add that to my property taxes, multiply that by the rest of the folks, you know, it's going to be a hard sell for most of our constituents in our HOA. And because most of them are all on limited incomes. And you add extra money for something that, out of our HOA, we only 5% or 6% of our population even uses the lake. So a lot of them are older, can't even get to the lake, but yet now they got to pay for somebody's problem. And as I crunch the numbers, now this is as of that first public hearing. Fishing game was going to have to pay 15 grand. Offutt Lake Resort was like 1,500. Our homeowners association was going to be paying up to 8,000 a year. And then the lakefront at 750. Now, I, being a homeowner, if those numbers changed, I wasn't aware of it. But I don't feel that we as our homeowners association should pay more than a commercial business because they generate the most usage on the lake. And I think you guys could have the ability to rescind this whole thing and take it off the books. Because I'm not an advocate of this LMD at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Stephen Shibey? Shibey? Okay, I apologize.
So I'm Stephen Shibey, and I live at 4137 116th Avenue, Southeast Olympia, 98501. Thank you for hearing objections. I'm also one of those who is talking more broadly than just about the 750 rate. I've lived at Offutt Lake most of my 56 years of life. I lived a little time in Africa and a little time in Alaska, and of course, I went to WSU. But I've really been on site most of that time. I have a few reasons why the tax rate should not be added. This is more how I'm approaching it, and it has to do with equity fairness. First, the rates were not established by elected representatives. My understanding is the rates were set up by a steering committee that we didn't elect. But it sounds like, now, I haven't heard this, but it sounds like there was a hearing. Can we clarify that? Because I'm also gathering information here. There was a hearing to talk about the rates. Okay, so apparently there was a hearing. I did not know about that, and I've been watching it pretty closely. Second, the rate change is a result of a levied tax requiring... Was required for the forming of an LMD. Regarding that LMD, I'm told there were 68 no votes and 62 yes votes. Is that... That came from Gary's email? Is that on the record? Is that publicly somewhere where I can... Is it documented? And do we know? Anyway, I would kind of like to know where... So then, but by weighting the votes, it changed the outcome to approve the LMD that had been a no. Now it's a yes. And I'd just like to point out that there are no other levies, school levies, fire department levies, that are weighting votes. Perhaps one of the reasons why they're not weighted, if you give more weight to people or land or money... People who have more land or money, they get more votes. Then pretty soon, you're giving more votes to the rich, and the poor have no say in the matter, but they still have to pay. So there's this equity question. Third, I would like to know if the Department of Fish and Wildlife abstained or participated in the vote. Does anyone... Can anyone confirm that?
We will follow up with your question, sir.
Okay, so if they did, I just want to say that our country allows us, as citizens, to levy taxes to pay for projects we approve for vote by tax-paying citizens. State and federal funds may go towards schools, but those entities don't vote. The citizens vote. So it's a little awkward if the fishing game... I did write him a letter and asked him to abstain, but I'm not sure that's equitable. It may be following a policy that's handed down from the legislation. I'm just wondering if it's really... Would hold up in court. Finally, the real reason why I'm not sure we should have any tax of this season is because the good news is, the weed is visibly absent from the lake. If you look closely, we will find tiny pieces. And there are some colonies, but they're not along my shoreline. I can't see any. And previous years, we were removing wheelbarrow loads. We were pulling it out with special rakes, these big wide rake tools, and we removed tons of material, which helped remove nitrates and phosphates from the lake and may result in why it's so low this year. Who knows? So that's the good news. Please visit the lake if you haven't. It's a wonderful change. We're watching closely. I'm going to keep moving here. As a visual artist who annually earns less than 10% of the average Thurston County household income, I'd prefer not to pay any additional taxes, especially towards studying or treating the lake. That's probably one of the healthiest lakes now in the county. It's certainly more healthy than our two neighbors, Temple Lake and Macintosh. So just encouraging to steward government and taxpayer monies toward real needs that are tangible. We'll still have to watch it. It could come back with vengeance next year, but I would propose we do a watch. I'm not sure of all the variables affecting Offutt Lake. Perhaps a septic tank fixed, there was one. Weed harvesting for consecutive years, removing nutrients, an unusually cold first half of our spring, an open lake outlet. But none of these required any taxes, and the lake is doing well. So just note for the record. So I would request that a moratorium be placed on all LMD activities and taxes.
Thank you, sir.
Am I done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And we did receive... We did receive your letter as well in the packet. Okay, is there anyone else in the boardroom who would like to provide public testimony? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Duke Wung, and I live on 4237 Waldrick Road Southeast, Olympia, Washington. I believe the LMDs on this whole matter, the communication is really poor to let the lake owners or lake... People who live on the lake knows what the situation is at. And, you know, I get letters and stuff like that. Even the voting, I got the ballot, I voted, but there was no communication on the result on that. So overall, the whole process is like, seemed like behind the door. And I'm an electrical engineer. I work for Tacoma Public Utilities in the water division up there. And every time we do any kind of rate, we really communicate to our citizens or to the ratepayer of our intention of what we're going to do, have a public hearing, proper public hearing, and why we're doing it. So, you know, make it visible and allow people to comment on it. And I think this whole thing is just kind of behind the back door and trying to push through so fast that now, you know, we had to pay 750 bucks. And that's a lot of money for most of us, especially this time of year, you know, with the inflation and thing that's going on. And like Steve mentioned, the lake is healthier this year. And, you know, like he said, you can come and visit. There's just less weed. So this, I think there's need to be more study. Need to be done on it and look at the situation and the environment. Why this year and not last year? And things like that. So that's all I want to say. Just overall, I'm just not very impressed with the whole process of making this thing happen and making the lake clean for everyone to enjoy. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the boardroom? There was a comment that was sent via email, and they asked that it would be read in the boardroom for record. And so County Manager, can you please read it so it's on the record?
You pointed out the specific.
It's from Danny Howard.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you.
It stays as follow. Say, "Hi, Tim." Tim Wilson. "I am sending my written comments below, once again, regarding the Brunson County Beach Club, BCBC, HOA issues and concerns with the Offutt Lake LMD proposal as our HOA only has a single piece of property on the lakefront, shared by over 100 HOA members. As President of the nine-member BCBC Board, I ask that this time my email be read on the August 22nd, and it has not been the initial November 2022 public hearing, which was very surprising and disappointing since I represent over 50% of the individuals tied to this overall Offutt Lake LMD proposal. We, as the BCBC Board, have not changed our stance on this matter and don't understand how Thurston County Commissioners appear to be disregarding Washington State Fish and Wildlife, WDFW, facts and statements presented at the initial public hearing that show the LMD proposal was copied from other LMD proposals. And there was no solid scientific data supporting property tax amounts by category, and there is no toxins in the weed. But treating the lake could create more problems than not treating the lake. As taxpayers, our HOA community that do not believe, did not live on the lake, nor have a view of the lake, would expect solid data to be part of any decision-making for powerful leaders such as the county commissioners regarding the tax amounts by category. We have not seen that, nor has anyone brought that up, as far as we know, other than WDFW. But we continue to bring it up as a community being sucked into a political BS. The LMD proposal is a joke to our entire Board because one group of what we believe to be the richest, richer, and higher-income individuals owing $550,000 to a million-dollar-plus homes on the lake saw an opportunity, quote unquote, to force an HOA group of 115 properties to pay for their lakefront issues, therefore increasing their property value equity, while doing nothing for any of our HOA properties. Our HOA consists of mostly, mostly middle-income or to lower-income individuals, and very few even visit or use our single-lake-front shared properties that apparently is damaging the lake where we, as an HOA, will be required to invest $80,000 over a 10-year period. If the wrong decision is made on the proposal, apply rights. And that's signed by Danny Howard, President of the BCBC."
Okay, so we'll move on to Zoom now. I see two names.
Yeah, then next I have on the Zoom screen, I have Lynn Pollard.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. You have four minutes.
My name's Lynn Pollard. I live at 4149 116th Avenue Southeast, Olympia, Washington. And I did send in a written document. Did you receive that?
Yes, we do have under the pollers.
Okay. And I did want to also just say that is... Or ask a question that I hope we can be answered later of how do we go about having a hearing to dissolve the LMD? Because that's really the issue here. It isn't about the rates because the weeds are gone. So there's no need for this whole process, and it's a waste of people's time. So I would like to ask that question and have that answered today. Thank you.
We will follow up with that question.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I have Rob Pogue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. You have four minutes.
You got it. I am only here to voice my concerns as I did on our last meeting, and that is the fact that we were asked to vote for something that, well, our community had no information on in terms of clarity for our community to know what they were voting for or against. Again, we still don't have a budget in place, and we don't know at all where our money could be going. I only ask that we really consider what we're doing with our community here in terms of how the money is going to be spent. We were given only the chance to vote with our bleeding hearts. And with such a close vote and a weighted vote at that, a little bit concerning there. Beyond that, yes, we've seen a much better year with our lake. I believe it has a lot to do with the county getting to finally clearing out the culverts and our lake actually having water flow restored. But from there, I haven't written anything. So this is just something to weigh on your minds and hopefully Tim can present to us a budget that is consistent with that, which we made our drawn up with the rest of the people that knew and raised funds and made this all come together in the first place. Thank you very much for your time and have a good day.
Thank you, sir. And I will contribute public testimony.
Okay. Anyone else in the boardroom? Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the discussion and Commissioner Edwards, go ahead, sir.
I don't think it was explained here today by Tim about the process as it's evolved. And we've reached a certain point now. And doesn't the RCW address voting this down or changing our mind or that kind of thing? It seems like we've reached a certain point and then we're obligated to move forward. Could you explain that? And that's by RCW, I think, isn't it?
Yes, to your question, the statute speaks to once the board authorizes a vote of the public following adoption of the resolution of facts and determinations. That is the body in which the board found value in the Lake Management District and authorized the vote of the public. And as communicated to the board in briefings, that was the decision point for the board in the formation of the LMD. Once the statute is clear, that once that comes back, that vote comes back in the affirmative per the weighted vote, and the weighted vote is by statute. You may recall the discussion on the word shall. In the statute, it says that the board shall pass an ordinance creating the district at that point.
Okay, then with that as the preamble, I guess, if you will, what steps do community members have available for them? Because several have said that they wanted to do away with the whole thing and, you know, they were, for whatever reason, if they maybe didn't get all the information or they've had a change of heart. What is that process? I guess that was asked by one of the folks in testimony. But is that something that you can address right now where you could say, well, the LMD is in place for X number of years and then it comes up for a vote again? And you can yea or nay at that point? So could you explain that maybe just a little bit to the voters, what the next step might be? And there's kind of a two-pronged benefit to that. If it continues on like the law kind of has laid out by a majority vote of the weighted vote and goes through the process, it'll give those folks the incentive to do the right thing, to do a better job with the lake, even though the lake is in better shape this year than it was last year. But at least it'll kind of set the tone for we want to do better. But I don't know how long that has to go on before they, as a community, are able to get together and rescind the vote or vote against it when it comes up for renewal? Did I hear you right when you said ten years? It's a ten-year commitment?
I'll speak to what I know and defer to legal, that that I'm not clear on. So what I'm clear on is that the board authorized the vote for a ten-year LMD. And that is what was petitioned for by some of the community members, a ten-year LMD. So at this point, with the passing of the ordinance, the board has formed an LMD that would be good for ten years. As far as rescinding the LMD, I'm not aware of a mechanism for that. But that is where I would defer to legal because I am unsure of that.
Yeah, that really is an interesting question. I think we need to probably follow through.
Yeah, well, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just wondering if there is a mechanism because I do think at the end of the ten-year period that there's a reauthorization vote.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
So they might be stuck for ten years unless there is some mechanism in place, which I don't know about, but it could be there.
Yes, yeah, the LMD would sunset at the end of that ten-year period. So without further action by the community, it would go away.
So if there was going to be further action, I guess it'd take legal counsel to do something. And we don't know the answer to that yet. It sounds like... Rob, do you know?
If I may, I did, the same RCW does address the dissolution of a Lake Management District. It's under RCW thirty-six sixty-one three-ten, which is basically the same process for the creation of it would be the process for dissolving it. And it would only be basically, a Lake Management District may be dissolved either by the county legislative authority upon the finding that the purposes of the district have been accomplished or a vote of the property owners within the district proposed by the legislative authority of the county or through the filing of sufficient petition signed by the owners of at least twenty percent of the acreage within the district. So it's pretty much a similar process for the dissolution.
So it sounds like there is recourse. That's all, that's kind of where I was going. That there's, you know, the majority of the weighted voters said they wanted to do this. If now we're having a change of heart in the community, we're pretty well obligated to keep moving forward, is my understanding. But if the members of the community have had a change of heart and, you know, you've reached over here and brought some new followers in with you, then there is recourse for you to deal with it. That's what I was, thank you, Rob, for doing that because I just didn't know. But, and I didn't want to give any false hope either, so, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Questions? Commissioner Muntzer?
I kind of covered questions I had. I mean, with the special district, we had a petition to dissolve. We couldn't dissolve. We could only suspend because they had a bond. But I would imagine that's a different scenario because they're independent of the county. Whereas here, like if the district was doing something that, like in the special district could actually do something that we would find to be against the public interest, which is why we have to have that mechanism. LMD would never do anything against the public interest because they're working in concert with us. I mean, theoretically speaking, that we would have that. We could stop them through the mechanism of our partnership rather than having to go through a separate process for suspending or dissolving like we did have to contemplate with the special district based on a citizen petition. So I could see that why there'd be a different structure there. But the point is there has to be some recourse for whatever. What I was concerned about is existing county manager mentioned only if the purposes have been accomplished.
There is an additional caveat in the RCW that it cannot be dissolved if there are outstanding bond payments or if there is an existing contract that otherwise might be impaired. So...
So that's maybe analogous to the special district where you could suspend activities?
Yeah, that was even on the special use district. You may recall the board could have the option to suspend it. You can suspend it because they have a bond and a financial obligation. But even if that didn't exist because it was voted by the members of that district, I believe the board only had the option to suspend it for a certain period of time. Not necessarily had the authority to dissolve it because it goes back to the elections of the members of that district who needs to weigh in whether they'd like to continue or not. So I think it goes back to the same as Rob stated. You know, I think since this is a citizen initiative, the creation, I believe, based on what Rob stated, there has to be a citizen initiative to consider dissolving it.
Twenty percent of the...
Right.
And then that, then it goes through, back to the process of...
Then you go through the process, the similar process that perhaps you went through and consider creation of this LMD.
That's twenty percent of the acreage.
Right. At this point, we do not have scheduled a next vote, so...
Okay, when is, do we have it scheduled, our next follow-up meeting?
Well, we need to schedule a follow-up meeting briefing as a result of this conversation. But again, I'd like to remind the board at this point, the scope of your decision is very narrow.
And can we have legal at that meeting, please?
Yep, and I was just reading the legal perspective on that, the specific question. And the legal confirmed that your scope at this point is very narrow.
You have this follow-up scheduled on September twentieth?
But we'll make sure that you have all the information before you consider making a final decision.
Thank you. Okay. So, Commissioners, any additional questions or comments at this time? Okay.
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
And Jamie has stated that the follow-up meeting for this is on September twentieth. At... I'm looking it up too. September twentieth at eleven AM. And it will be livestreamed through our Thurston County YouTube channel as well. Okay. We are adjourned.